Okay, good evening. It is 5:01. I'd like to call to order the April 8th Committee of the Whole Meeting. Ms. Boeck, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Spatafor. Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Palivanoglu. Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Cost. Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. You have five members present.
All right, thank you very much. And with that, we have the minutes for the March 18th meeting. Vice President Hussein.
Sure, I would move the meeting ministers presenting.
All right, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right. So at this time, we are to public comment on the agenda items. Please come down to the well, state your name for the record, and you will have up to three minutes. If there's anybody from the public, please come on down. Not seeing any, and as of right now, we didn't have any virtual public comment as well. So with that, we will move on down to presentations. We have Presentation B, Fiscal Year 2024/2025 Budget General Overview Fees, Revenues, and Fringes. Mr. Brower, Mr. Jackson, thanks for being here. So what we have is, what we did is, we compiled, City Council compiled nine questions through all departments. So they're here tonight to answer those questions. And we are supposed to adopt the budget by the third Monday, which would be May 20th, so that's what we plan on doing. And with that, thanks for being here this evening, you guys. Make sure your green light's on, and feel free to start when you're ready.
Thank you for inviting me to join you. My name is Jake Brower. I'm the Chief Strategy Officer for the City of Lansing, also acting as Budget Director. With me, I have Jackson Mills, Budget Analyst from the Department of Finance. Overall, when we are looking at the City of Lansing's budget, we're talking about a fiscal year that runs from July 1st to June 30th of every year. If you're looking at the budget presentation that we have, going into the budget process, you'll see that the beginning of the budget process is that prior to October 1st, you as a body act and you send a list of your budget priorities that you work through, through your various committees, and ultimately through inaction of City Council to send a listing of budget priorities to the administration. In November, we took this list of budget priorities and met across departments, all of our directors, to review our major challenges, priorities for the upcoming year, looking into the budget development process itself. Around September, we sent out initial, the Part 1 of our budget instructions, which was department narratives, a listing of department services to really look into what our departments doing, what is the value of those services, what are notable accomplishments or initiatives that provide context towards the overall budget process. Then, subsequent to that, Part 2, which came out in November, was the very nitty-gritty details of line items, personnel estimates, department budget request forms. In that, we included the, we incorporated the city mission that Council had prescribed as a reference, and departments had until December to submit those requests. Taking in those requests from January to March, the administration reviews all of those for technical accuracy, meeting with all of the department heads between me, Jackson, Desiree, the mayor, and anyone else for each department that directors wanted to bring with them. So we talked about what the departments submitted, what are they proposing to do, both from the numbers perspective and from an operational perspective, ultimately culminating into us taking our estimated revenues, all of our expenditures, both status quo, new efficiencies that we're recognizing, balanced up the budget, that we were able to submit that by the fourth Monday in March. And then before us, we have the exciting work ahead of deliberating on this budget and approving it no later than the third Monday in May. Going on to how the city spends its money, the graph you see on this presentation comes from page 29 of the Budget Book, How the Money Is Spent. The City of Lansing's budget totals $270 million for the FY25 budget proposal, the largest portions of which you'll see come from public service, particularly driven by the number of enterprise business activities, so our wastewater, our roads, which are primarily funded through state sources, as well as trash and recycling services. Thank you. And so, the next largest proportion is not from any particular department, but rather the obligations that the city has towards paying back our employees for the time that they've spent working as part of the city, so our retirement benefits. So overall, we have not only the obligations of our employees in the current year, but paying the amortization of all of the retirement benefits that accrued that have not yet been funded from previous years. And so we're steadily on track with that, making our actuarially determined contributions and making sure that we responsibly set aside the funds necessary to make do on our obligations now and into the future. After that, we, the next biggest portions of our budget relate to public safety, both from our police services, as well as our fire department services, which for members of the public, both include the actual firefighting activities, as well as the emergency medical service activities. And occasionally, I have asked the fire department on a couple occasions whether they do still rescue cats from trees, and they have received several of those calls in the past. After that, the next quarter of our budget is a combination of community development activities. This is our economic development and planning, general government, all the administration, HR, financial services, fleet and equipment, subset of public service relating to the fleet vehicles that are used to run all of city services, recreation and culture, all of the parks activities, partially funded through charges through services, and the, also the millage for capital improvements to the parks, and then information technology and other activities. Going on to the following page, looking more towards our general fund, you can see the sources of revenue for that. Our general fund budget totals $165.1 million in the proposal, the largest portion of which is property taxes, which make up 33% of the budget, followed by income taxes, return on equity, state grants, and then a remaining 9% between charges for services and other revenues, being fines of forfeitures, interest and rent, sales of facilities, and so forth. Going into those specifically, we look at our property taxes. Overall, we're looking at a total ad verum property tax value of around $3.0 billion for the City of Lansing. We have 19.44 mils of operating levy, which we adjust for LVRAs.
Excuse me. Oh, there you go.
Yes, thank you.
Never mind, I just want to make sure that we are on the right slide. Thanks.
Oh, yes. Yep, we adjust that for tax captures for all of our economic development initiatives, and overall, this represents about a 6.5% increase from the amended budget. This can be attributed to strong growth in the past few years. Overall, we're looking pretty strong in the short term, looking with caution towards the long term, but overall, not seeing any signs of emerging concerns. We're seeing continued supply and demand effects where low supply is offsetting higher costs of borrowing to keep property tax values high. Sales are slowing down, that we do not see as much of uncapping, but there has been considerable amounts in the past few years, and there still remains a gap between taxable values, the capped amount of property tax values as you stay in your home for a long period of time, and assessed value, which is the true value of property taxes, so to speak. And Sharon Frishman is not immediately behind me, or our new assessor, to correct me if I'm wrong on the technicalities there. However, overall, we're seeing major developments. Some of those are funded through tax incentives, offsetting some of that property tax increase. However, they come with secondary effects, whether it's other businesses being attracted to support them, improve property tax values of areas, and of course, income tax revenues. You can see in the subsequent chart, the breakdown of property tax revenues year over year, both the original, let's see, 15.44 mils of operating taxes that back in 2014 was increased by four mils. We have two of those mils going towards roads and sidewalks in our park system, and then another three mils that we dedicate towards our police and fire services. Moving on to our income taxes, current year outlook, we have in our budget $42.3 million, of which preliminary third-quarter estimates are at $25.0 million collected to date, which, doing some back-of-the-math calculations, using historical year-to-dates to final, we estimate somewhere between $41.5 and $42.8 million. This is one of our revenue sources, which is particularly subject or susceptible to economic factors. And with the tax season ongoing, I also want to encourage everyone to follow your taxes. We greatly appreciate it, and thank you for your contribution to city services. Overall, when we're looking at our budget assumptions, the state's projecting a fairly strong growth in personal income, of course statewide, not necessarily for the City of Lansing specifically at 4%. And altogether, we project a 2.7% increase from the lower estimate for FY24. Going into state revenues, which again are 15% of our budget, you can see the various sources, whether it's from revenue sharing, fire reimbursement, which is a sort of pilot payment the state makes towards the fire protection services that we provide to state facilities, personal property tax reimbursement, which is a reimbursement of tax revenues that the state declared that we could no longer take, and so they've made us whole for those amounts, recreational marijuana, which is relatively new in the past however many years that has been a distribution. We've seen growth in that revenue, which has been tremendously valuable for providing city services, as well as the capital city allocation of $1 million, which we saw in the governor's recommended budget proposal to be retained for FY25, which we're greatly appreciative, as well as a small amount for liquor license revenues as collected by the state. Going on to the next chart, you can see the effects of state revenue sharing cuts. So over the years, 2002 was a particularly high point for state funding of local governments. And as you look at these charts, also remember that these are in nominal dollars, not adjusted for inflation. So between 2002 and 2012, we saw state revenues decline from $20.5 million to $12.7 million as the state balanced its budget. That has since recovered over the years to $19.1 million projected for the upcoming budget, from a combination of reviewing the Senate and House fiscal agencies consensus revenue estimating conference documents, as well as the governor's budget proposal. Going into the following slide, which looks very similar to the first, you can see, and that's what it shows, is the impacts of what would be our revenue sharing if the statutory component of that remained the same. And so, I've, in my way, taken two steps forward without explaining the difference there. The constitutional portion of revenue sharing is a portion of state sales tax collections, which is mandated by the state constitution to be distributed to local governments. The statutory component is an additional amount that the state sets aside in its budget to make those payments. And so, if the state has a particularly good year or a particular bad year, they can balance their budget by giving us more or less dollars in that amount. And so, back in the bad days, 2002 through 2012, the state was cutting revenue sharing, and since then, it has grown slowly, but not nearly to the amount that it was back in the good old days. Overall, if you take the 2002 level of revenue sharing statutory amount added to the constitutional payments that we receive, that's about $172.7 million that the state has not appropriated towards the city. And so, that's a significant impact over many years, but at the same time, we're grateful for all the steps that the state has taken to get us closer and closer to that amount. Going on to the next exciting component, the estimation of all of our fringe benefit costs. So looking at our proposed budget for payroll fringes, we, the biggest component here is really our active employee healthcare, which is approaching $10 million. This is the net amount that is paid by the City of Lansing as the employer, so employees paying up to their hard caps or optional amounts in their contract. This is the remaining amount that is paid by the city. We also have $3.3 million estimated for FIC and Medicare costs, dental and vision coverage, life and disability, defined contribution match for people who are not in our defined benefit plans, or in part of our hybrid plans, as well as healthcare savings match. There are areas that we could potentially bring down lease costs, some of these which we are ongoingly pursuing, such as bidding out and negotiating services. This is something that has a higher impact the first time you do it, but as you get into the schedule of doing it on a recurring basis, you still see savings, but it's not as large as when you do it after a long period of time. Plan audits, very similarly. One area we're looking at is whether we can consolidate the number of plans we have, either getting similar terms between our union agreements, and just overall to ensure that our administrative costs are down. It also gives us a benefit that as we bid out healthcare services or RFP, that different providers may be more interested in us than if they take a look at our proposal and say, oh, we have to accommodate 20 different variations, we don't have the time or capacity to take this on, so. And then lastly, the largest area we can impact our fringe benefits is negotiating benefits. However, that naturally has a very strong impact on employees, and so far, that hasn't been something that we've seen a lot of encouragement from a policy perspective. Going on to our retirement benefits on the following slide, you can see that the biggest component is our pension contribution, estimated at $34.3 million. This is split between our employees' retirement system and police and fire retirement system. The State of Michigan, in this current fiscal year, appropriated a series of grants to bring underfunded systems up to 60% funding. And so, the City of Lansing received an $11.5 million grant, which we contributed to that system in addition to our annual actuarially determined employer contribution. And so that is going to see significant long-term benefits, estimated to reduce our annual payment going into the future by $500,000. That's $500,000 that can go towards all sorts of city services that would otherwise just be going towards past services that we're making do on. So, again, an area to thank the state, and we're very grateful for that. We also have our retiree healthcare, split between our employees' retirement system and the police and fire component. We are paying, as part of our funding strategy, we've talked a lot about the actuarially determined employer contribution, payment strategy as opposed to pay-as-ego on the benefit side. One thing that we're seeing is that we have been paying into the benefits as they come out, but we have not been drawing from the trusts themselves, and so we're going to be making a balanced payment, so particularly in areas where we require a certain amount of pre-funding into the systems. We're seeing our VIBA healthcare approach, 90% funding, whereas the employee retirement side is slightly lower. So it'll just be a mix of money going in and out, making our actuarially required contribution, and overall, bringing down the curve of total cost responsibly and fully funding our system in the period assigned. Other benefits, you see leave buyouts, these relate to employees leaving the city with accumulated paid time off periods that are due to them on leaving, so we estimate about $1.0 million for that. Workers' compensation coming out to an annual cost of about $1.4 million. And unemployment, very similarly to the previous fringe benefits, as potential areas to save with about the same impacts and so forth. Moving on to the following page, we go into our fee changes. So with our park system, we have fee changes proposed, and this is attached to the budget resolution as it relates to the Budget Book, way back on page... 184. So the park system, we have changes within our community centers, Turner Dodge, the historical site, within the aquatics program, athletic field, and cemeteries. This includes eliminating the notary services for the cemeteries, new classes, and general cost of increases for programs, both programs that have, in the past year, and also some fees that haven't changed in a number of years, are now catching up to the current costs. Within our public service, we have changes proposed for garbage and rubbish collection, recycling and yard waste, and sewer services. With courts, we have an increase to the lower bound for civil infractions, city clerk, changes to liquor license and paper submission fees. We are also reviewing several cost proposals from the Economic Development and Planning Department, which are not yet included in the budget proposal. These are things, these relate specifically to studies for our parking services and our code compliance office. We are reviewing the results of those studies, and should have a proposal to you soon, which we can approach in two different ways, either addressing those fee changes independently from the budget process, or if you prefer to handle it simultaneously, we can offer a substitute to the budget resolution, incorporating those proposed changes, as we have a final list to get to you. But you can also check in with the Economic Development and Planning Department as they present their budget, and they'll have a little bit more background and updates as to the timeline for both of those. Moving on to the following slide, we have our infrastructure highlights for the budget. Overall, we are pleased to announce strong investments in our state, our major and local streets. There's $750,000 for improvements within our parking system, $700,000 for new sidewalks, sidewalk repairs, and gap closures, from a variety of sources across our budget. Within our Public Safety Department general funds, we have $100,000 for sustainability operating funds. That is also in addition to our full-time sustainability officer and sustainability specialist positions that focus on these matters 100% of the time, and also their various grants that through us having this stronger investment in sustainability, both personnel and operating, that we've been able to apply for and receive on behalf of the City of Lansing to be more responsible from sustainability perspective going into the future. We have $50,000 in capital improvements for the Jackson Field Stadium, which is related in part to our license agreement for the operations of that facility. We have an additional arborist for the forestry division, and two solid waste operators for trash pickup and recycling services. Going into the operational investment sides, operational investments, these, more details can be found in the individual department summaries, which in the Budget Book you can find through pages 78 to 164. On the public safety side, the state has proposed a significant adjustment to their revenue sharing, setting aside a specific portion to go towards addressing violent crime. This would be, by their proposed formula, approximately $3.5 million that would go towards the City of Lansing, and if the State of Michigan passes those dollars, we'd be using it to hire 15 police officers, a crime analyst, and a camera technician as we build more infrastructure for cameras to watch public facilities, having a person who can really manage that full-time, as opposed to having a lot of infrastructure up that no specific person is in charge of its operation. So this gets a person on that and able to really master that area. We also, the fire department has long requested a cadet program to train new firefighters and paramedics to expand on their capacity, so we have $150,000 to hire four cadets into the fire department and begin that program. We have $300,000 to continue advanced peace and similar gun violence prevention programs, $260,000 for two new firefighters, $150,000 for annual firefighter medical exams to make sure that they're staying healthy, able to serve the City of Lansing to the fullest extent, and also enjoy a good quality of life, both working for the city and going home at the end of the day, safe and sound, and to the best of their health. And then lastly, $80,000 for promotional and testing services in the police department for better promotion processes. On the general government operations side, we're replacing the vacant deputy finance director position with two accountants, really just getting people who can get into the meat and potatoes of accounting work and really address those final repeat audit findings and better accounting throughout the city. We love to see it. And then on the HR side, we have a dispute resolution, dispute resolution and training staffer for our human resources department. Moving into our development staff, we have, within the Lansing Economic Development Corporation, we have a grant-funded staff member as part of their budget, so you don't see any increase. It's all in grants, as well as in the general fund, funding to address housing funds, particularly those programs are, have a very strict requirement of who is being served, and so this allows either a full-time person to be dedicated towards activities that are not eligible for those funds, or for an additional person, for everyone to split their time accordingly between either source. Lastly, as we go into our final slide, we talk about meeting this mission of the City of Lansing. This is text that you might recognize, because it is a text that you considered carefully and approved as far as the City of Lansing mission, and submitted to the administration as part of the budget policies, priorities for this budget year. We took to these ideas into consideration very thoroughly. This is part of our budget instructions to departments, and overall, the City Council adopting its annual statement of budget policies and priorities established the following mission for the City of Lansing. The City of Lansing's mission is to ensure quality of life by promoting a vibrant, safe, healthy, and inclusive community that provides opportunity for personal and economic growth for residents, businesses, and visitors, securing short and long-term financial stability through prudent management of city resources, providing reliable, efficient, and quality services that are responsive to the needs of residents and businesses, adopting sustainable practices that protect and enhance our cultural, natural, and historic resources. practices that protect and enhance our cultural, natural, and historic resources, and facilitating regional collaboration and connecting communities. And so we are proud to recommend a proposed budget that works to address each of these goals. On page 21 of our budget book, I go into detail as to how each of these elements is directly represented within our budget proposal. And overall, we look forward to the discussion over the next two months and any questions you might have as far as the overall budget goes. And I thank you for your having me here today and your time.
Well, thank you for being here. I appreciate it. Thanks for going over this presentation. Do we have any questions from council at this time? Not seeing none. I do have a couple, though, just real quick. Thank you for being here. So income taxes. Question, what is the city doing to make sure that we are collecting all this income taxes within the city? I know we have quite a few projects that we're having workers from out of town, whether it's Grand Rapids, Howell. How are we making sure that we are captured in all those taxes and bringing them back to the city?
I think you'll be very excited for the treasurer's presentation later today, but repeating what she has told me, the City of Lansing has invested strongly on the enforcement side, the education. So as I said, income taxes are due April 30th, which is slightly different from the federal deadline. But everyone is expected to file a tax return regardless of whether or not they owe the City of money. We like to have it for our records, and please do that. On the data analysis side, the department is invested into purchasing state tapes from the state of Michigan as to people submitting tax returns to the state, which we can then utilize to see who should be paying income taxes for the City of Lansing, and then getting in contact with whoever needs to be contacted for that. They are also working very collaboratively to anyone who may have had trouble with their income taxes to get on some sort of plan that gets people back to the side of good in the world. But I won't steal too much of their thunder, but the strong investments in enforcement, stronger data analysis, working on improvements to our reporting systems, how we use the information that we receive from our city tax software, and then outreach and education would be the third pillar.
Perfect, thank you. So I just got a couple more. So when you spoke about fringe benefits, you said, you know, the biggest contribution is the pension, $34.3 million. And I spoke with Mayor Short earlier today, so I'm not sure if you're prepared to answer this, but I know he said that he's going to address this. But regarding contract employees that aren't putting into our fringe benefits, are we slowly eliminating those positions as we're filling the vacancies? Hopefully, that's something that I'm definitely interested in seeing, you know, more contract positions going away and more full-time vacancies being filled.
No, I think we, I very much encourage when I meet with departments, like if you have contractual positions that are temporarily filling the role of a permanent position, we encourage departments to post those permanent positions to get someone long-term in those roles. One area, and I missed this when I was writing up the department summaries, but our human services, human relations and community services department, a few years ago, eliminated the secretary full-time position for a contract manager. And in this budget, we are restoring that as a full-time position again. And so there's been someone on contract who's been at the front of the building, but this will put them in a full-time role with benefits that they're able to dedicate 100% of their time, just the general benefits of having someone who's not looking at job opportunities but rather is 100% for the City of Lansing. We'd like to see it. So.
Do you know, do you by any chance know if the additional arborist for forestry, if they were a contract position or if they are a full-time employee?
Oh, that position is a full-time position being added to the budget, yes.
Great. And then just real quick, I'll leave my please comment for when they give their presentation. But regarding the $300,000 to advance peace, I guess this is just more of a comment than anything. I guess I'm curious to see what next big trip they take, because I see that they just went to Paris Disney World. So hopefully that's coming back to the city and with some helpful information. With any other, Vice President Hussein?
Yeah, so real quick, the Board of Water and Light return on equity contract, that expires at the end of this fiscal year, which is June 30th. And we are budgeting, as I understand it, for an additional $1 million. And so we're curious as to what the renegotiation plan is, why we're confident in those numbers, because the numbers for this year are not tracking in such a way that would make us think that we're going to have an additional $1 million.
I appreciate you asking this question and jogging my memory. So yes, the numbers for the Board of Water and Light as far as the proposed budget for FY '25 come directly from their continuing disclosure documents as it relates to their debt disclosures on an annual basis. So this is an update as of December from what was originally included in their budget and is at a comparable amount. So we've been discussing both the Board of Water and Light's projections for upcoming years as well as the current year's payments, which payments one and two we received were less than projected, which can be attributed to the market rates for wholesale energy sales. So within our traditional retail activities, it's, the prices are set by the Board of Water and Light, they're fairly predictable. In the past few years, we've seen a fairly substantial rise in the revenues that the Board of Water and Light has received from wholesale sources, just selling directly into the market for whatever the market is available to pay. And so that amount has been declining very significantly this past year. And so we are in discussions with the Board of Water and Light on an ongoing basis, both for what is the contract going to look like for the next couple years, and also is the contract appropriate for what we're getting in the current fiscal year. And so not getting too deep into the details of that, we're hoping to ensure that we meet these budget goals. But I also welcome your consideration, thoughts, advice on the policy side. If there's anything you want to encourage on our behalf for things to consider in those negotiations, which would be concluding in the next month or so, that the Board of Water and Light would be able to review it at their financial services committee, their full board, and then ultimately go to this body. Yeah, so that's how I got the numbers and what we're considering.
I'm sure some folks will be in touch. Typically, our internal auditor asks this question on an annual basis, but since we don't have one right now, is there ongoing structural deficit? And if so, what are we doing in this budget to address it?
I am very pleased to say that this budget balances our revenues and expenditures. It is the first budget that I've gotten to present before this body that does this, although it has been in previous years prior to 2019. And so overall, there's $165.1 million in expenditures, $165.01 in revenues. This has partially been done through careful, careful balancing of expenditures containing costs across the board, some major initiatives, whether it was renegotiating a lot of our retirement benefits back in around 2020, 2021. More recently, we renegotiated with Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority where we took a look at their past few years of financial performance, saw that they've been improving financially, and we recognized that we could reduce the subsidy a considerable amount to a sustainable level that benefits both Lepa's ability to operate and maintain funds for all of their needs as well as the City of Lansing to have the funds available to pay for all of our obligations on an ongoing basis. And so that, between all these responsible actions, the long path that we've taken, getting from all the way through all of those COVID years, we have arrived in this budget proposal at a balanced amount, and we're fairly happy at that result.
And I may have missed it, has the city received all of our federal reimbursement money from FEMA for the August 2023 storms?
We have received them in that they're not promising us anything at this moment. I know we've sent some angry thoughts, at least in our head, if not on paper, that we are strongly seeking some sort of reimbursement for that, but I have nothing to report at this time, unfortunately. I encourage you to contact your federal legislators and tell them that the City of Lansing is very deserving and that we're very forward-focused in supporting our disaster recovery and sustainability into the future.
Mr. Lawrence?
We may be in line for a little bit from the state of Michigan, but I think to Jake's point, I think we're striking out with the feds.
All right, thank you. Any further comments, questions from council? All right, seeing none. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
Moving on down the list, we are to information and technology, Mr. Chris Mumbey. Good evening, Mr. Mumbey. Thanks for being here with us tonight. Make sure your green light's on. I'm sure you've been down here before, you know the routine.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I, my presentation will be not quite twice as long as Mr., I'm kidding. I tried presentations before and was told to stick to the questions, and so I'll try to do that and just see if there are follow-ups afterward. So I'm going off the list of supplied questions. Some of these are one answer, one-word answers, but feel free to follow up as you like. The first question has to do with the difference with our current proposed budget from this current fiscal year. And there's no substantial changes besides the camera specialist or camera technician position that was mentioned that would only come if we received those additional revenues as proposed to be housed within IT, the police, public safety funds that was mentioned by Jake. That would be an additional position only if those funds come from the state. Are there changes in services your department is responsible for, and if so, why? The answer to that is no. Are there rate or fee increases, and if so, why? The answer to that is no. Are there any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? The answer to that is the typical PC replacements that we do on a four- to five-year cycle are the only big purchase proposed in our budget. And that's not necessarily considered major equipment, but it's a couple hundred thousand dollars in computers. Are there any eliminating, combining, or contracting of positions in your budget, and if so, provide specifics? There's no changes proposed from the current year except that potential camera position that I mentioned earlier, which is only if we get that additional funding.
And is that a contract position, then?
That would be Jake Brower response.
Full-time.
Thank you.
It's so iffy that I didn't know the answer to that, so thank you. Are you able to perform all necessary departmental responsibilities with this budget? The answer is yes, we can. Are there any new initiatives or services your department will be providing with this budget? I would say no, with the exception of potentially we'll provide better services with our cameras if, again, that position is added. The next question is, and we're almost through, who are the top two largest vendors for your department, and when were they last bid? The top one in the IT department would be DuPont, and it started out as MyDeal, but this past year, in 2023, we did enter into a new agreement, which was a sole source with DuPont. The second largest vendor would be Microsoft, and that started in 2022. It's through a cooperative purchasing agreement, and it's a three-year agreement, so we're entering the final year of that agreement. The last question that was offered ahead of time was, what, if any, operational changes have you made to become more efficient in your department, and what were the savings? Just a few to mention here, we eliminated approximately 60 fax phone lines, which actually saves about $50,000 a year. We made a switch to modern Microsoft Teams phones and estimate that cost to save about $50,000 per year, too. We'll know better in a couple more months as the last AT&amp;T bills are winded down, but we will see some savings with those new Teams phone system. And then the final operational change is we issued an RFP recently for a new ISP or Internet service provider to increase speeds for connectivity between all of our facilities and to reduce cost. That new contract won't start until next year, but we did, we did have a selection of a new provider that'll happen in calendar 2025. Those are the questions you asked ahead of time. I can do my very best to answer any follow-ups if you have them now.
All right, much appreciated, thank you. Do we have any follow-up questions for IT? Okay, thank you, Mr. Cost, Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. Chris, you said that you have a sole source with DuPont. What is the sole source?
With DuPont?
Yeah.
They provide infrastructure-related services for us, so they provide partial staffing. So you could consider that like contract positions, although it's been that way for a decade or so. We have four and a half funded positions that deal with networking and firewalls and other infrastructure-related IT services that our staff are, do not have the qualifications to manage.
All right, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from council? Vice President Hussein?
Yeah, one, is the copier replacement project completed? Number one, and number two, if so, did we realize any cost savings as a result?
It was completed, gosh, I think probably December of last year. There might have been a few stragglers after that. It appears to be about a wash. We anticipated some savings based on initial selections from departments, but we also had some, oh, I wish I would have asked for this kind of solutions when some of the devices got here. And so there were some changes made at the request of departments. Our now former internal auditor asked me about this, and I did send a report to her, which if it didn't get to you, I'd be happy to forward to whoever would like to see it. I gave a three-month look back and said for the previous three months, on the new plan with the brand-new machines, which are faster and under warranty versus the almost seven-year-old machines that we replaced, we paid about $1,800 more over three months, so about $600 more per month for that three-month comparison. But it depends on the number of copies printed. We didn't compare and see if the same number of copies were printed or anything like that. I did produce that and gave that to Ms. Linden, and if you didn't get it, I'd be happy to provide it.
All right, thank you. Looks like Councilman Cost.
Yeah, one more question, Chris. On your operating costs, there's employee parking for $21,350. Could you tell me what that is?
Yep, I can. Jake wants to interrupt, but I can cover this. It was always covered in HR before, and that was just a decision made by finance to move those costs to the individual departments. So there was a big subsidy in the HR department that covered all employee parking for employees in paid parking places and ramps, and they moved that cost to the individual departments. So it's not a change for us, it's just a change in where it's allocated. How'd I do, Jake?
You did very well. Yep, so adding into that, we had, and it wasn't necessarily all city parking, but I believe when Teamsters negotiated free parking as part of their agreement, just as a shorthand, the budget for those, that parking was put in HR's budget, just as a, here's one place to charge this cost. This budget, we took that cost, took a parking spreadsheet that we received from the Economic Development and Planning Parking Services Division, and took a look at what employees were being charged where and allocated that cost to the appropriate departments and divisions for the existing years. for the existing years' contracts. The HR did recover some of those costs as it related to our annual cost allocation plan. However, going forward into FY '25 and into the future, we're simply charging that cost out directly as part of department's budgets. It's also just helpful for generally being aware of what employees you're paying parking services for, that rather than HR being in charge of all of these costs hitting their line item where they may not be actively looking at 700 employees at a time from the perspective of a given office, say, Finance or the Mayor or Economic Development and Planning, they can see those costs hit their line items in their budget, look into the transaction detail and say, hey, who is this person? They left a week or a month ago, and we can clean up that cost much more proactively. So a little bit being more responsible and catching up to best.
Jake, I'll assume that these are being paid to parking, correct? That these are city parking spots?
Correct, and so overall, the revenues to the parking system will remain the same.
Do you know how many employees this is for 21,000?
I can get you that list.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any additional questions or comments from council? All right, seeing none. Well, thanks for being down here tonight, Mr. Mumbi.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. So moving on down the list, we have Economic Development and Planning, Mr. Raleigh Van Fossen. And Nicholas Montri, sorry. Good evening, gentlemen, make sure your green light's on, and we will go through the questions for you as well.
Sure, thank you, Council President Garza. I think everybody here has met me now since I've started, but if not, I'm EDP Director Raleigh Van Fossen, and with me is our Deputy Director Nick Montri. Before I begin, I also want to point out that in the back of the room, I was successful in courting our entire leadership team to join me tonight for the enthusiastic budget presentation you're going to get from EDP. So we have Walter Allen, our Code Enforcement Manager, Hal King, our Parking Services Manager, Barb Kimmel, our Community Development Manager, Sue Statuak, our Planning and Zoning Manager, John Snyder, our Building Safety Manager, and with him is Tina Rader, our new Commercial Projects Manager for the Building Safety Office. Similar to Mr. Mumbi's presentation, we were also prepped with nine questions for the department, so we're going to go through those questions and see if you have any additional comments or questions for us. First question was, what is the difference with your budget from the current fiscal year to the proposed? We don't see any major changes in EDP's budgets, much of the change you are seeing is administrative fringe, of which Jake and his team so eloquently addressed previously. Some of our budget is a little bit unique, differing from other departments, being that we have a development office that does receive direct dollars through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Those are our Community Development Block Grant dollars, our home dollars, and our Emergency Solution Grants. Those also go through an annual action planning, we'll be here next week to talk to you further about that, so we saw a slight reduction there. But overall, EDP and budget, slight changes largely attributed to fringe on the employee level. Are there any service changes in our department that we're responsible for? If so, why? Don't have any significant changes in services at this time. Are there any rate or fee increases, and if so, why? In our initial budget forms for parking, that should be in your book, we are seeing a slight increase due to inflation, 2% to 3% in our parking ramp permitted spots. We're also seeing a 5 cent increase per transaction using our pay stations. Again, those are increased costs just to cover ongoing operating of those machines. With parking, and you'll see this as a theme with some other questions on here tonight, we may see additional fee changes, as well as just parking changes in general as it relates to the parking study. Those are not being proposed in the current budget, as we are still soliciting feedback. I believe we did share that draft study with all of you previously at the end of January, as well with stakeholders throughout the community, and so the Parking Services Team, Hal and such, are still collecting that feedback, so if you do have that feedback, please get it to us, and we'll take that into account as we determine if there's any recommendations. So if we do propose that, it'll be likely outside of your budget process for Parking Team specifically. Following the fee study, we also, as Jake mentioned, completed a fee study for our Planning and Zoning Office, Building Safety Office, and Code Enforcement Team. We do have some draft fee changes that we are proposing across all three of those divisions. Due to the nature of the study being completed late in terms of getting the necessary budget docs to the administration, to them, you all, as Jake mentioned, we're going to try to entertain potentially two options with you, whether you want to see those changes be introduced and run outside of your normal budget process, or if you want to entertain a substitute. So I've worked with Jake to get him those information, and we'll continue to work together getting it to you all, and so you will see changes for those three divisions coming as a result of that fee study. Number four, any major equipment purchases in our budget? No major equipment, but one thing we did want to point out is capital improvements, and it's specific to our Parking Team, and so we do have some costs in the budget for both ongoing maintenance and construction across our ramps, including two chillers at our North Capitol Ramp that are in need of servicing, preventative maintenance, we will be working with an engineer consultant to continue to oversee the lifespan of those garages, ramp washing of the garages, striping of the streets in conjunction with some of the conversion, two-way conversion that's going on downtown on Ottawa and Allegan, as well as signage that will come through. So those are notable major capital improvements that I wanted to point out, but again, to the question specifically, no major equipment that's being planned to be purchased next year. Any eliminating, combining, or contracting of positions in your budget? If so, provide specifics. Not for fiscal year '25 in the draft you have today. I did want to point out, though, we do have one contracted position on our Building Safety Team, and it is largely to assist with some of the vacancies we're having. We had a retired Chief Electrical Inspector depart to department a few months back, but he has graciously come back on a part-time contract base to ensure that electrical plan review can continue as the construction picks up. But again, in the budget, we don't have any planned contract positions combining or eliminating of positions. Number six, can we perform all necessary departmental responsibilities? Absolutely, yes. Are there any new initiatives or services in our department that we'll be providing with the next budget? A couple things for our Parking Division, it'll be, again, completing the Parking Study, compiling that feedback, and determining if and what changes we want to bring forward to you all for consideration. The same is going to be for our Zoning, Planning, Building Safety, and Code Enforcement fee study changes. Again, those have been sent to the administration, and we'll be looking for your feedback here soon. In December, we did approve a Building Safety reorganization. Much of this was to begin our work addressing what we know to be an ongoing construction season, both this current year, next year, and really for the next three to five years. Some of those projects have come down before you all for support, and so we're predicting right now, our estimates are a half a billion just in the next three years. So a part of the reorg that was approved was creating a Commercial Projects Manager position, somebody who can focus solely on some of those larger projects. For example, NeoGen currently is investing almost $200 million in our downtown. It takes quite a bit of an administrative task to keep our team in order with all the necessary components. But that reorg also allowed for some operational redundancy positions. For those familiar with our department, a lot of our chief positions of the trades, so that'd be building, electrical, plumbing, and mechanical, and our plan review, we've seen recent retirements. We've just actually, this past Friday, celebrated the retirement of Brian Shields, our Chief Mechanical Inspector, who committed 28 years of service to the City of Lansing. So some of the operational redundancy across those trades were to build a greater bench so that as future retirement comes down, we're not left with just one inspector to cover the role of potentially interim chief, while also the day-to-day of a normal inspector position. So that reorg is in process now, and we're actively recruiting for those positions. For next year's budget, we increased training line item across all divisions. Much of that is to address with the hopeful filling of vacancies across some of our divisions and the need to then train thus new hires. We expect that some of that training will continue into next year. Furthermore, for training, we know or are predicting that the state legislature will adopt the 2021 Building Code, as well as the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code. What that means for us at the local level is we'll follow suit with that adoption. There'll be time in which some of that will come before you all for consideration. That will require training of all of our team, both current and future new hires. And then lastly, our Community Development Division, as you heard in Jake's presentation, we are requesting general fund position for a housing specialist, haven't landed on the title, but again, it's somebody to address and work with the team on the array of housing issues that present this community, but outside of the traditional work that that team is focused on, which is really that low to moderate income, as their funding has restricted them to. So this will give us a little bit more flexibility in what we can use a future staff person on. What are the top two largest vendors? It was an interesting question, because we have five different divisions, but the top two, or the top couple, I'll read out. For our code, it would be our abatement contractors, so that'd be Trumble Trucking, as well as Eric's Refuse. Those contracts are planned to be rebid out later this summer, early fall, in partnership with the Purchasing Office. For parking, it's our Parking Services, ParkOn, New Park, and Flowbird. Those assist with our kiosk, as well as enforcement collection. Those are also on schedule to be rebid out this late summer, early fall. And then we have various vendors that are generally one-time contracts. For example, you'll see this current fiscal year, significant dollars paid to Maynard Custerison for their work on our fee study for the code, BSO and Planning Team, as well as Walker Consultants, who assisted with the Parking Study. What, if any, operational changes have we made to become more efficient? For parking, we did create and implement temporary no-parking signs and kiosk wraps, you may have seen. We use those for large special events. It's a minimal dollar effect, but it's certainly noteworthy on staff's time-saving, not having to go out there necessarily and manage that during the event. Those wraps have been critical in supporting that. Across all divisions, we do continue to move towards to a more electronically housed information system. This is to help maintain file integrity, cross-training, and future referencing of material, working to digitize the documents. For example, we are required by law to keep plan review documents until, for the lifespan of a building, being able to digitize some of those. We have aperture cars and so forth, will be critical to the longevity of EDP and what we keep. And then lastly, we are anxiously awaiting the rollout of a cloud-based BSN A software system. This cloud base, what we're excited for, will hopefully allow for better technology used in the vehicle while we're out in the field, both in conjunction with the city-supplied laptop and/or iPad. Again, and that is forthcoming. I think that was the last question.
Well, much appreciated, thanks for being here. Do we have any questions, comments from council? Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Director Riley. Just wanted to say thank you for being so thorough and providing all of the information. I know we spoke over, you know, the past, and so thank you for answering all of those questions in that report.
Appreciate it, absolutely.
And thanks for your team coming up, too.
A little family photo.
Any additional questions or comments? Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, so the parking fund, you know, obviously still losing revenue. We talked a lot tonight about studies and input and plans moving forward. I think we're some $250,000 in terms of expenditures over revenues this year. Is there anything in the short term? I know there's some things, you know, we're going to play the long game with this, but anything in the short term with this budget that addresses any of that?
So some of what this current budget, or the proposed budget, might address with the fee study when we get those results, I know it's potentially playing the long game, is some of the fee study hinted at lowering the cost of some parking throughout the city, both either on-street ramp or surface lot. Some of our concerns with lowering that price is then the net impact that has for the parking revenue, and so it's not going to be an easy question to address some of those long-term liability costs when we receive overwhelming desire from folks in the community to lower what we charge for parking, and so it's difficult to address those long-term needs while the community desires to see lower-cost parking, which is why we wanted to step back for a moment, further solicit greater input from the community, including all of you, because those types of changes would require that approval from this body. And so until we decide on that direction, we're going to hopefully maintain that the prices we have now to keep operations intact.
Any additional questions, comments? All right, I have one. I guess it's, first off, thanks for being here. Regarding building safety and code compliance, are we fully staffed for the vacancies, and if not, where are we at in the process of hiring?
Sure, and so the short answer to that is no, we most certainly are not. And so across our entire division, we have, the largest area we have vacancies would be in building safety and code. We do have a few vacancies, I think we did our math right, three vacancies, full-time in parking services, and two seasonal. But with our Building Safety Office alone, we have 11, and with our Code Office, we have five. We do have five award letters out across code and BSN O, so hopefully we'll start to see those numbers start to go down. The 11 number does include the recent reorg, inclusion of those additional redundancy positions, so that's new to the team. And so that came about with the approval in late December, and then we've got to go through the process of creating those positions, working with HR, working with the third-party Siegel and so forth to then get those posted. I can say all but three are now posted and are actively being recruited. There's not a day that goes by that either myself, managers and team, or Nicholas, managers and team, are on interviews and are actively working to fill those positions. Just on the BSO and code enforcement officers alone, myself, Building Safety Manager John Snyder, and Tina Rader from that office attended our local Home Builders Association meeting last week. We had a packed room of about 30, we were the guest speaker. We spent about 45 to 60 minutes with folks of that like, who are doing that type of work in the field, to talk about recruitment strategies, how to get the word out further about these types of jobs. We've seen some changes across the state level on the licensing requirement for inspectors. It's in fact made it more difficult than what this department has been used to on how to bring folks up the ranks. One of the biggest examples I can say that hits close to home is code enforcement, and the work as a code enforcement officer used to count as experience to folks wanting to be interested in becoming a building inspector. The State of Michigan changed that, and that no longer counts as a requirement. That's in fact how our, not to put them on the spot, how our building official became an inspector, is he joined the city in the ranks of code compliance and was able to utilize that experience and work his way up. To that effect, we're actually meeting with the Deputy Director of LARA, hopefully this Thursday, to talk about some of those changes, because we have grave concerns that the impact it's going to have on the inspector profession across the state.
All right, well, I appreciate that. Now, as you fill those vacancies, do you plan on putting out a code map again that will, like, state where each inspector are, or are you rotating those, or how's that going to work? I thought that was very helpful in the past.
I mean, Ken, yeah, we have an updated one as of right now, but yeah, as staffing changes, that will be updated as well.
Okay, thank you. Looks like we have something from Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up. So in terms of the five vacancies in code, how many of those are premise, and how many of those are code compliance officers?
Yeah, we currently have four code officers vacant, as well as one lead housing inspector. Our premise officer positions are currently full.
Full?
We do have one award letter out, we're expecting a new code officer to start hopefully here in the very near future.
Okay, and then I guess I have an additional question. In my time at council, we've added thousands of rentals in terms of our stock, but we have not added code districts, and we have not added to the number of code officers. So best practice, I mean, at what point are we going to look at adding? And I get we're having a hard time staffing the positions we're funded for now, but I would assume there's some internal conversation about whether or not even if fully staffed in terms of, you know, what we're fully funded at, whether that is appropriate number or not. Because, you know, we do a great job in the city talking about affordable housing, variety of housing stock, making sure people have roofs over their heads, but we don't do a great job at talking about making sure that they are quality, that they're safe, that they're appropriate, and obviously, your division goes a long way to making that happen.
Sure. I'd like to see, you'll see more from us on that. I think you kind of laid out the outline as much how we are approaching it. My first priority is to fill most, if not all, of those vacancies so we can resume the service in which the budget is providing for. You know, six or seven officers when we have 11 positions. We see the impact every day. I know you do, I know that many of you do. We work with you on those types of inquiries to respond. But second, and added to that, is the likely anticipation of the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code. For those not familiar, we enforce first what the state adopts, and so every community across the state are working under the 2015 IPMC Code, as well as the Building Code. Those are international codes that are updated almost annually, yet our state lags drastically behind. And so part of it is filling those vacancies and then preparing ourselves for that new code so that we can train those on staff now and the likely to fill, and I'd like to see what that provides us to then discuss additional, folks, whether that's a code enforcement officer position specifically, or that's a code enforcement officer position specifically, or more premise, or something sort of in between. I think when we have a discussion on some of the proposed fee changes, you'll see where some of that is going to likely lead to hopeful future policy asks of this body as well. And I think that robust strategy could lead us down to a decision of if we need to grow and enhance the team.
Yeah.
Sure.
So I guess I have another question, too. In terms of this budget, is there anything in this budget that addresses our, I guess I'm going to call them commercial corridor inspector, the capacity within that office, support for that particular individual? We advocated for that position a number of years ago. You know, commercial corridors, districts, et cetera, we know have seen better days, right? But when we're talking about attraction, retention, those are critical. We're talking about commercial viability for businesses, critical. We're seeing folks fold up tents and, you know, vote with their feet essentially, and I'm talking obviously some of our commercial stock, and a lot of it is related to the condition of the corridor. So the individual we have in that position, and I know we're talking positions, not individuals, but doing a great job, but could certainly use some support. So is there anything in this budget that reflects that?
I would say what's in this budget is, that supports that is a further sum of what we have now. And what is new now is, under the building safety reorg, we created a permits enforcement officer position. And so the strategy with that is we will be able to bring our corridor specialists through, that's currently housing our zoning team, a partner in crime over on our building safety team, as well as the direct connection to our code enforcement. It provides us kind of a three-pronged strategy to address and hit some of those bagged actors because we not only have property that's blight and being unaddressed by commercial, that are through our commercial corridors, we also have property within our commercial corridors, much of it that blight in which work is being done that is not being done appropriately. Our zoning, the person in our zoning division can't address that, so insert the creation of a permits enforcement officer. That permits enforcement officer comes with another position, which is similar to the corridor specialist, but not specific to zoning policy. That's also going to be within our building safety office. That all came about under the reorg, and those are two positions we're actively recruiting to fill for. Outside of that, we can continue our partnership and coordination with the LEDC, who oversees our corridor improvement authorities, to try. I think we've had some recent conversations ourself. Some of this increased capacity, you're going to see move through our demolition board with addressing longstanding blighted commercial property to, again, remind folks who, whether they live here or not in the city, if you own property, you're going to be held to the standard of what our ordinance is, what the building code and what our property maintenance code require. What we're not going to permit is grandstanding on coming down to this dais, talking about other projects, while yet you sit and hold valuable property that is derelict and in a terrible condition. The hope is, in conjunction with the current corridor specialists at our zoning office, those two additional positions in building safety, we'll be able to bring some enforcement support.
Any additional questions or comments from council? All right, seeing none. Well, thanks for being here this evening. It's much appreciated.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, moving on down the agenda, we have the Fire Department, Chief Sturtevant. Appreciate you being here this evening. Make sure, yep, you did, make sure the green light is on, and please proceed whenever you are ready, sir.
Okay, the Fire Department did take a look at the nine questions that were submitted, and we've got some prepared responses as it relates to those questions. Number one, what is the difference with your budget from current fiscal year to the proposed budget? We are looking at a 4.5% increase in the fire budget this year. A lot of it revolves around personnel services increases, which actually equate to $1.8 million as proposed right now. We are looking at two additional FTEs. We're looking at the cadet program, and we're also looking at the medical exam, cancer screen appropriation, which has caused a bump in our, in our budget. Are there any changes in services and why? Question number two. Primary services are status quo, for the most part, EMS, fire rescue responses, but we are looking to mimic the Police Department's cadet program that would focus on City of Lansing residents, Lansing School District students, to develop the pipeline for possible hiring into the organization. We're also looking at the implementation of a Heart Save Community Program, which right now is going to be developed from an internal standpoint. We have partnered with Stryker Corporation as it relates to an upgrade of our EMS equipment. And we've recognized some rebate monies that we are going to transition into AED purchases. Along with the Automatic External Defibrillator Purchase, will come the need for community-led CPR classes, hands-only CPR. We really are focused, as we move forward, on our community risk reduction efforts, and we feel that this EMS community risk reduction would be huge for our community. Question number three, are there any rate or fee increases? We don't anticipate or have not proposed any for this current budget year. Question number four, any major equipment purchases? Most of our major equipment purchases are going to be through fleet. We are looking at a new fire engine, a new ambulance, a 12-passenger van for our training staff, and two administrative staff vehicles that we will be looking at, electronic vehicles. But that will be part of the public service budget discussion when Andy gets up here to speak to you folks, because that will come under the fleet umbrella, if you will. Question number five, are we eliminating, combining or contracting any positions? No, we are not, not on the Fire Department. Question number six, are we, do we have the ability to perform our necessary department responsibilities? Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Very, very confident with that. Question number seven, any new initiatives and or services? As previously mentioned, we are excited about the cadet program rollout. We're excited about the Heart Save Community Program rollout, which really, right now, has zero budget impact. We're very, very excited about the NFPA 1582 firefighter physical exams. Cancer is the leading cause of occupational death and hazard in the fire service. We have been impacted organizationally by cancer, so we're very, very excited to provide this level, this level of resilience for our members, that we're looking to have them combined with their primary care physician so that we can redundantly build in the screening that is so, so necessary within our organization. Also, this current fiscal year, we will be moving forward with a ISO assessment. Again, zero budget impact, but the five-year mark for our Insurance Services Office Assessment is due this year, so we have already had some discussions with Board of Water and Light, with our 911 Dispatch Center, which are both major stakeholders with the ISO Assessment. And we will look to have the ISO team in the City of Lansing, working with the Fire Department, probably mid-fall, late fall. We want to do it before the weather gets too bad. Top two vendors, question number eight, would be BioCare LLC. They are the vendor for our medical examinations. That was just recently bid in fiscal year 2324. And Phoenix Safety Equipment, they are our PPE, our personal equipment, protective equipment, a vendor. And of course, we have a 10-year shelf life on our PPE. We purchase it in a phased approach so that it does not all expire at the same time organizationally, and they are one of our biggest vendors. That contract was last bid in 2019. We do anticipate taking a look at this contract this year. The reason why it tends to roll over is so that we can maintain some continuity with the gear across the organization, as opposed to a new vendor, a new type of gear every time we make a purchase. Question number nine, operational changes to increase efficiencies. Again, we are looking to leverage technology as best we can. We've moved forward with the contract with PS Trax LCC, which is an inventory asset management vendor. We're looking to, again, utilize the technology to help us track our equipment, our tools, our supplies. Very excited about this in advance of the upcoming construction based on the bond project. We definitely want to track and monitor our equipment and supplies a lot closer than what we may have in the past. Again, we found the money internally to make this happen. Does not have a budgetary impact for the upcoming fiscal year. Also, we're leveraging technology with our EMS supplies. We're going to a vending machine type of a distribution system where the highly-used supplies are in vending machines in our firehouses that our ambulance crews has an ability in real time. It helps us track, it helps us rotate stock, and we're very, very excited about what that looks like. And also, another change that will increase our efficiencies, we are moving forward with NFPA 1620 pre-incident planning process in conjunction with developing the City of Lansing Community Business Registry. Right now, I was a bit surprised because most organizations or municipalities that I've worked in, businesses had to secure a license to conduct business. Not so much here in the City of Lansing, so we're not really sure that we know what we don't know as it relates to who's out there conducting business in our community. So developing this business registry is going to be critical for us to identify, inspect, ensure that we've got crews that are in these locations so that they can put eyes on some of the high targets within those businesses that will help with the pre-fire planning. The best fire is the one that we don't fight, and we do that through prevention. So those are the nine questions. I hope you have some additional questions and thoughts for me, and I am prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Much appreciated, chief. Thanks for being here. We do have a question, comment from Councilman Brown.
Thank you, President Garza. Thank you for being here, chief. Over time, I know we were speaking, you know, last year, and just wanted to kind of relate it to the budget. How's the service volume? Is it growing or so?
Yes, thank you for asking that. It is a concern organizationally. We've seen a pretty significant, almost a 40% increase in our call volume, and we're trying to manage that with status quo resources that have been in place for a number of years. I've got some stats here that since 2008, we've had a 4.7% increase in call volume from last year. Year before, it was 3.5% increase. Year before, it was a 17.5% increase. And the year before that was 2019, it was COVID, and it actually dropped because no one was really dialing 911 at the time. It is a concern. We have some studies that we've reviewed that reflects with our current call volume, the City of Lansing should be deploying seven, eight, maybe even nine ambulances. We're managing it with five. We've got some phenomenal firefighters. They get it done day in and day out. But I am concerned because the trajectory of our call volume with our status quo resources is unsustainable. And if there's anything that keeps me up at night, it is what and when will something tip to make this a reality on what we know is coming? Since 2008, the stats I wanted to quote, we had a 34% reduction in stations from nine to six. We had a 16% reduction in personnel from 226 to 190. The 190 is if this budget gets approved with the two positions that are on the board. But we also had a 40% increase in calls since 2008 from 16,000 a year, and we're pushing 28,000 a year right now with those same resources. So, yeah, it is a concern. We're managing it as best we can. We've got tons of resources in place as it relates to mental health, mental well-being, psychological first aid for our membership. It is a concern, to say the least.
Wow, thank you so much, you know, and please continue to keep, keep us updated and be looking at how we can try and help meet that need. Additionally, you spoke about you were working on accreditation process. I know it was quite complex. Was there any updates on that?
Well, the accreditation process, we're still quite ways away from that. We were able to accomplish the first step, which was the development of our five-year strategic plan. We kicked that off in January of this year, so it will be good for five years. A lot of great work from staff, internal. We brought in a facilitator and made that happen. The next step of the process would be to develop a community risk assessment, where we identify in our community the high targets, the moderate targets, the low target of risk in the community, and we develop the service-level objectives on how we want to address those risks. We put all of that in a document that is called a Standards of Response Coverage Document. And the third leg of the stool, if you will, as it relates to accreditation, revolves around a self-assessment. And we would work with the Center for Public Safety Excellence to come in and help guide us through that process. But as it states right now, our Fire Department, we're still a good 36 months, 48 months out from moving completely in that direction. So on my appointment, I felt it was necessary to develop the strategic plan, provide us with a rudder of our ship, give us some vision on where we would like to be, and compile all of the information as it relates to our current performance and when and if it leads us to the next step of accreditation. That would be a good thing, but the beauty of accreditation is not the destination, it's the journey. Measuring our organization against best practice, smart practice, what's taking place in the 21st century fire service, and being able to see how we match, how we stack up. And if we don't meet that mark, what is our plan to get us there? That's the beauty of the process.
Well, thank you so much, and I hope that as you go through that process of efficiency and strategy, that of course it connects to the resources that are needed to accomplish it successfully. Thank you so much for you and everyone who provides a service to our community.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Councilman Brown.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So first of all, thanks for being here, chief. We appreciate it. So I understand that this budget reflects two additional FTE. Going back to December, was that your request of the administration, two FTE, or were there additional?
My request was initially a phased approach, and I talked to the mayor about it, and I initially requested four new FTEs a year for the next four years. And what that would do, it would allow us to right-size our Fire Department, and it would time with the movement into the new facilities based on the public safety bond. So that was the initial strategy. I understand the competing interests. I understand some of the limitations, and to be quite frank, to be able to walk away with the couple, we'll take it by all means. But, but again, this body, I just really want to be very, very clear that we're going to have to get our arms around our staffing issue more sooner than later. The current demand for services greatly exceed the resources that are in place, and that trajectory is concerning for me.
No, and I appreciate it. I have, I have some numbers here, too. So in 2010, my understanding is our daily minimum staffing was about 52 per day.
Yes, sir.
Right now, we're sitting at about 41.
41, yes, sir.
And with that being said, back in 2010, our annual call volume was 16,769, which is about 46 calls a day.
Yes.
And now we are sitting at 27,623 calls a day, at 76 calls a day.
Yes.
And somehow, we're trying to manage that with 12 less FTE on any given basis. And of course, we have less engines, and we have less stations, et cetera. And I would agree that our firefighters are phenomenal. I think they do a phenomenal job. But when we talk about attraction, when we talk about retention, when we talk about sustainability, and the percentage of these calls that are EMS-related calls is staggering.
Yes.
So I think we have to, as an administration, as in a council, we have to wrap our arms around this issue, and I don't think two FTE this year, next year and beyond is going to get us to where we need to get, frankly. So we will be certainly having those conversations with this state.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And again, it's just a matter of awareness right now. Again, the, the character of our organization with our membership, they really, really get after it. I've worked in the fire service for a number of years around this country. I could not be more prouder than I am with, with the men and women of the Lansing Fire Department. But again, that, that level of trajectory, it's not going to self-correct. We're going to have to really aggressively do something about it at some point. I would hope it would be in advance of a precipitating event, and now we're all going, wow, we knew it was coming. Yeah, that, I'd lose sleep over that, yeah.
All right, thank you, Vice President. Do we have any additional?
Oh, one other.
Sorry.
Sorry, one other question. I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up, because I'm emailing you all the time about the warning signals, right?
Yes, sir.
So is there, is there anything reflected in this budget that speaks to So is there, is there anything reflected in this budget that speaks to additional surveys, additional, you know, any type of capacity within that system? I know that we were out in southwest Lansing this past weekend. Should have been some warning signals at about 1:00.
Yeah.
We weren't too far from where I believe that, you know, some of those signals are positioned, and we didn't hear anything.
Yeah.
So just curious if anything is reflected in this budget.
Yeah, that monthly test did take place. The first Saturday of every month is the LAW test. The subsequent Saturdays after that is kind of a systems check. What we continue to do, and this is with any level of technology, is to evaluate, to analyze, to see if there is a need for some levels of upgrade, update. We do have some grant ideas, and if need be, we will be able to find internally some funding to help support the outdoor warning system within our community. We have not asked for a budgetary increase in that regard, but we know that with any levels of technology, there will always be some need. It could always be a little better, a bit more robust. So we continue to evaluate that. The statewide tornado drill that was held a few weeks ago was pretty critical to help us identify some of the gaps and shortfalls. We feel confident in the system right now, but it could always be tweaked, it could always be a little bit more robust. So we want to maintain some flexibility with what that looks like when it's identified. Again, we did not request any budgetary support, but we do have some flexibility internally where we could move line item funding to address what that increase in update of technology would look like. So by all means, it is on the radar.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Vice President Hussein, do we have any additional questions or comments?
All right, I just have, I have a couple. Thank you for being here. I know your job is very difficult, the hard work of men and women that are out there, putting their life on the line to protect ours is very much appreciated in our community. And when you talk about this cadet program coming back to life, I think that's huge. I mean, you guys are offering careers, you know, not just a normal job to our members of our community. I mean, I went through high school with multiple members of this community that became firefighters and now retired, because I'm starting to get in that age group, you know? But they loved it, you know, and I'm very thankful, and I want to, you know, commend you for doing that and bringing that back up, because I think it's very important for our community.
Yeah, we have a very solid working relationship with the Lansing School District, and we want to continue that as a possible pipeline avenue for our hiring. What we found with the HEAL Fire Science Program is that when those students graduated, based on timing and other factors, they were targeted by every fire department in the region. So when it came time for Lansing to really kick off the hiring process, we may have been just a day late or a dollar short. The beauty of the cadet program is that it will focus on City of Lansing residents, Lansing School District students, so that we've got a direct connectivity to the community. And we're very, very excited about what it's going to provide for the organization.
All right, well, thank you very, very much. Much appreciated. And moving on, another kudos to you. I appreciate the fact that we are no longer offering the mutual aid, well, I shouldn't say mutual aid, the aid to the wit. You know, seems like they weren't offering the services back to us willfully, and so I appreciate the fact that we are no longer providing services to the wit when, for instance, a fire could happen in South Lansing and we have a rig out in the wit.
Right, right.
So that is very much appreciated. Not that they don't deserve, you know, that protection, but it sounds like they're not willing to do the same.
Yeah, we took a deep dive at all of our mutual aid contracts and agreements, and we found that the mutual aid was not so mutual. Lansing being the big brother on the block, we were giving and providing a lot more than what we were receiving, and it basically became a default subsidy to these other communities based on our willingness to assist. So we talk regularly at the Metro Fire Chiefs level about the equality of our aid agreements, and I think it's beginning to resonate within the region on how we need to balance, because some of the signatures on the agreements, a lot of the individuals are no longer even working, they've retired out, they may not even be on this earth anymore. So it was time to update all of those agreements. So we dove into that pretty heavy, and we were pleased with the direction that is headed.
All right, well, thank you very much. I just want to let you know that that didn't go unnoticed, and it is very much appreciated. I think that's it. Thank you for being here. It's much appreciated. And with that... Okay, all right, well, thank you. Well, moving on, I mean, we have 20 minutes left. Thank you, Chief. We have 20 minutes before council starts, so with that, to save on time, we will be moving the city attorney, the city council, and internal auditor, and I see that we have our treasury, as well as our finance department, will finish with those two this evening. So moving next, we will go with our Treasury Department, Crystal Thomas. Please come down to the well. And I know you were provided the nine questions as well. So if you could, just make sure your green light is on and proceed whenever you're ready. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So I'll start. My name is Crystal Thomas, representing Treasury and Income Tax Office. First question is, what is the difference with your budget from current fiscal year to the proposed budget? There are no operational changes. We do have some adjustments to our costs that are just basically correcting the location of things, but that's something that you've heard throughout the evening tonight coming from the budget area. So nothing that's an impact to our services. Question number two, are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for, and if so, why? There are no changes. I've been in this role for exactly eight weeks, so not quite ready to make changes yet, still just observing. Question number three, are there any rate or fee increases, and if so, why? No, there are not. Question number four, are there any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? No, there are no proposed changes there. Number five, are there any eliminating, combining, or contracting of positions in your budget, and if so, provide specifics? I do want to say that in our current budget, so fiscal year '24, we did bring on a contract employee for our Treasury investigator support, just to help us with the administrative side of that role. We will continue with that contract as well. In addition, we are exploring a business intelligence or data analytics position. That's going to help us in the area of data. We want to be able to look at the data from our income tax, as well as our property tax, from a compliance standpoint, to see how things are trending. We are actually working with our information technology department so that they can help us build out dashboards and different things like that, so that we would be able to have that data more real-time and more regularly, so that we could then plan what the strategy would be to help our taxpayers become compliant. Number six, are you able to perform all necessary departmental responsibilities with this budget? Absolutely, yes. Seven, are there any new initiatives or services that your department will be providing? Again, we are going to be focusing a lot on data analytics, making sure that we can understand the trends and interpret that for compliance, because the more we focus on compliance, that means that we'll be able to have more revenue in those areas as well. Number eight, who are the two largest vendors for your department, and when were they last bid? We don't really have large contracts in Treasury and Income Tax. Most of our vendors are doing either some type of postage, or mailing, or preparing envelopes and different things like that. So they're very small in comparison to some of the other departments. However, our top, largest vendors are Kent Communications, or they also go by KCI. They provide services for our 1099G mailings. They also provide daily postage, mailings, pre-sort services, and things of that nature. Question number nine was, what, if any, operational changes have you made to become more efficient in your department? Again, you know, I feel like I'm talking about data analytics a lot, but the information is there, the data is there in the databases, you know, I use City Tax for an example for the income tax side. So it's just a matter of now bringing all of this to a centralized location where, again, we can look at the data, and then that's where the business analytics will come in, because now we'll have someone who can not only look at it, so now we have it in a centralized location. But what is this information telling us, and how can we plan our compliance efforts? I want to just give a shout out to the team. A lot of this really has happened under the prior administration, but I still want to shout them out, because they have, with the limited resources that they had, they still were able to target certain thresholds to say, well, let's see if we can pilot and look at some of our out-of-state, for instance, taxpayers that might be not in compliance. How do we get them in compliance? So they worked really hard with that, and they moved the number, they moved the needle really impressively. And so I looked at just how small of a group that was, and so that's where I really wanted to put more emphasis with that team, so that we could, again, the goal is just, you know, the fair compliance, you know? If the revenues are due, we just want to help taxpayers through payment plans and different things like that, you know, with the revenue, so. So those were your nine questions. So what other questions do you have or follow-ups on anything tonight?
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions, comments from council? Seeing none, I think he did, he knocked it out the park.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for being here this evening. You as well. All right, moving on down, we are to Finance Department, Ms. Desiree Kirkland. Good evening. Appreciate you being here.
Let me see if I can knock it out the park, too.
All right.
Yes, no, yes, no, I'm sorry, okay.
Well, it looks like your green light's on. I can hear you clearly.
Yes.
So feel free to start whenever you're ready.
Okay, going down the list, the first question, was there any difference in the budget for the current year, current fiscal year to the proposed budget? As been stated by our budget, our, right, Jake and others, we have eliminated two, we have eliminated the Deputy Finance Director position so that we can hire two accountants. We also had a decrease in our 311 allocation, and a decrease in our fixed fringes, as stated by Jake. Question number two, are there any changes in the service for your department? No, there are not. Question number three, any fee or rate increases? No, we don't charge any fee for our services. Are there any major equipment purchase or proposed in your budget? No, there's not. Are there any eliminating or combining or contractual position in your budget? As stated, we are eliminating the Deputy Finance Director position so that we can add two accountants. We do have some temporary staff people with, currently now, that are helping us stay current with our accounting and our bank reconciliations in an effort to reduce our audit findings. So those are the things that are currently happening with that. Next question, are you able to perform all necessary department responsibilities with this budget? Yes, we are. Are there any new initiatives? Well, I will say that we continue to do the migration to, from one solution to BSNA. In addition to that, we have, we're looking at adding a, we're adding a new credit card process called Pay It, for the departments that currently use a different system. So those are two new or continuing initiatives. Who are your largest two vendors? Maynor, our CPA firm, and BSNA Software, because of the purchase of that software system. With Maynor, their contract is coming up to expire at the end of next fiscal year, or this fiscal year, and so we will be looking at sending out a RFP to, for new services. And the last question is, are there any operational changes that will cause you to be more efficient? Yes, changing to BSNA from our current general ledger system, cross-training our employees to make sure that everyone is comfortable with the work that Finance Department does, implementing written, more written policies and procedures, helping other departments with their internal controls, because if we have the systems in place there, then we don't have to spend as much time when it becomes to come to the audit, and helping them understand why they're causing us to operate more efficiently. Any questions?
All right, well, thank you very much. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns? Councilman Brown.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you for being here this evening, Ms. Desiree, and thank you for all of the updates, because every question I was going to ask you provided, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments? Okay, so I just have one, and it may be from our internal auditor, but I see that it says the total expenditures decreased to $2,324,926 from $2,110,560. So is that, is that just spelled out wrong? Because to me, it seems like that would be an increase.
A decrease?
Yeah.
In our expenditures?
Yes.
I think that is probably related to 311 decreased by 92%. So it went from $47,000 down to $3,500.
Okay, so I mean, but what I'm looking at here, and it very well could be a typo, it looks like it increased by about $200,000.
Increase?
Yeah.
Of this current budget?
It says decrease, but the numbers I'm looking, I'm sorry. So this is, this is just something that was provided us by, that's in the packet?
I can possibly answer this question. So I think part of that is just our allocation of retirement fixed benefits. You may recall the $11.5 million grant from the state for our employees' retirement system. That has had a positive impact on what we need to pay into the employees' retirement system. We're also getting to a pretty, a better funded status as it relates to the healthcare benefit side of that question, so particularly for employees that belong to the employee retirement system, we see some impacts across departments on the fixed benefits line in combination with City 311 support, which I think in moving past through my prior presentation, I didn't thoroughly explain, but one of the things that we did this year is having a full year of data available. We were able to move from a model where initially our projections were just based on taking personnel counts for public-facing departments. We took the number of calls received through all of fiscal 2023 for the entire year, along with the number of knowledge articles created through partnerships between City 311 and individual departments, and we allocated that cost according to actual utilization of department services. And so one of the things you may notice is that a lot of departments decreased in their overall cost for City 311 services, and others increased. In particular, you'll see that Treasury and Clerk are some of the most popular customers for people that have inquiries for calling the city, where rather than navigating through a complex web of phone trees and internet pages, they just pick up their phone, call 311, and say, hey, I need help with my taxes, I need help navigating business licenses, take me to where I need to be. So that's where you might see the City 311, and then Retirement Fixed Benefits having a positive impact on the personnel side, even though the remainder is more or less status quo.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
It did, and I apologize. I wasn't trying to, like, throw a trick question out. I just, the way I'm reading it, I'm like, that seems to be an increase, not a decrease.
Yeah, yeah, no problem at all.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? All right, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Okay, moving down, discussion-action items. Number six, D, resolution, set a public hearing. Vice President Hussein.
Sure, we have a resolution in front of us that would set a public hearing for May 6th. This will be at 7:00 PM, City Council chambers. Before I move this, I want to give our council president and our office manager some credit. I think they were pretty intentional with the calendar this year. A lot of, I think actually every year I've been on council, our public hearing is still... actually every year I've been on council, our, our public hearing is typically the week before adoption. And so this actually gives us a few weeks between the public hearing and adoption so that once we actually receive input, we can actually consider that input and determine if there are ways that we can work some of that input into the budget that we actually approve as council. We also have a, just for folks, edification, a subsequent meeting, it's a neighborhood meeting on May 8th, that will be at Del Frieder Schmidt South Side Community Center at 5825 Wise Road, that's considered a committee of the whole meeting. We have an additional committee of the whole meeting on May 13th, if we don't actually consider adoption until May 20th, so we appreciate you. With that being said, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do you have any additional comments, questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? All right, motion passes. Moving down, resolution, Fair Chance Housing, Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. This is a resolution that would explain some of the history with folks with criminal records trying to get housing, employment, things, things of that nature, once they've served their time, and it would be asking the state legislature to act upon this rather than what we currently have where we have just a few cities that have enacted laws to stop that kind of discrimination against someone that has a criminal record. This would ask the state to make, make this a law statewide versus city by city. I would move, move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional questions, comments, concerns? Vice President Hussein.
First, I want to express my appreciation to, to Mr. Cost, but also for folks that are working this kind of issue at the state legislative level, I think we have a lot of work to do. We have, really across the state of Michigan, we have a number of communities through exclusionary zoning and other such policies that are essentially closing the door on low-income people, impoverished people, people with records. And so, you know, my hope is, and I think this is the conversation that's been kind of had at a broad, kind of state-based level, but that, you know, when, when we look at statutory framework, that we're not considering opt-in statutes, but as opposed to, you know, as, as much as constitutionally possible, that we are actually mandating communities to allow for this type of housing. And so I, I do have a potential friendly amendment where you look at now therefore be it resolved, just so it's a little bit clearer, it says that the City of Lansing City Council encourages and supports the state of Michigan in passing laws that will limit the barriers that people with records are facing in housing. I would like to, if possible, add at the end of that, in all communities across the state by making related policies mandatory.
I would accept it.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept the amended resolution?
Right.
Okay, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, same sign? Okay. And then so on passage, we have a, you got a motion?
Yep.
Sorry, I would move the resolution.
All right, with that, we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving down to Resolution F, Appointing the Chief Labor Negotiator, Mr. Mark Lawrence. I see the mayor's here now, did you, what do you guys want to speak on this?
I'm sorry, which one do we do first?
We'll do the appointing of chief labor negotiator.
Yeah, we are, we'd like to appoint Dennis Parker as our chief labor negotiator, I believe, he's here, yep, he's here, you can stay there unless they need you, that's your call, Mr. President. He is, I think most people know Dennis, he's been a union president for the UAW for many years, a longtime city employee, nobody knows the process like him, he has been someone that has been good to work with, he has been a fierce advocate for his, his members, and I think he understands not only his members, but Teamsters and fire, police. So I think, we really thought he would be a great person to go out and, and work with our employees, talk to them, he's already jumped in with Elizabeth on our fire MOU and has been part of that process. When you got the best, time to put him forward, and, and we think Dennis is, is really going to be just a fantastic choice, so we send him to you for your approval or consideration.
Thank you, and I've worked with him in the past and very, very happy that he's, he's coming on board, approved tonight, see he came with a suit, though. Looking good out there. But with that, Vice President Hussein.
Sure, before I move it, I had the opportunity to sit down with Mr. Parker last week, has always been an incredibly strong supporter of, of labor, so I'm, I'm excited by this appointment, I think he is uniquely positioned to leverage relationships, institutional knowledge and the like to strengthen the position of our employees, and I just hope that, and I'm going to be very candid, that he's not used for the alternative, because I think he's uniquely qualified for, for either, frankly. So we can talk offline. But with that being said, I will move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? All right, motion passes, congratulations. Okay, moving down, Resolution G, Appointing the City Attorney. Did anybody want to speak on that from here? Mark Lawrence, Mayor Schor?
I can do it, I can do it.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll let Mark off the hook, thank you for going a little late. So in the similar vein, we announced last meeting that Jim Smirka was retiring, and at the time, it was my intention to, to have Greg Venker, well, he is our interim, but, you know, we, we've reviewed and when it comes to people who know the law, who know this city, in the city's attorneys, in the city attorney's position, you have to know the current city, you have to know the code, you have to know the charter. Greg's been here for a number of years, he has been fantastic, he's a deputy city attorney. Again, when you have the right person, you put him forward, and I truly believe that Greg Venker understands that he'd be working for both you and for me, he really, I, I joke around with him, he's not working for either of us, he's working for the charter, and he's working for our ordinances to make there that everything is, is, is on the up and up. I have full confidence in Greg Venker, and I hope you do too, and I will send him to you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mayor Schor, much appreciated. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns from council? Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. My concern with appointing the city attorney this quickly is that we all haven't had a chance to properly vet Greg. He's, he's a very nice person, I have no issues there, but, you know, this is the only check and balance that we have when it comes to department heads, and I don't think that there's any reason to rush this. I want to make sure that we get it right. In the past, we have had people come before us for appointments to that city attorney position that carried some things that were outed during a process. So I would like to see a process play out, and instead of appointing him as the city attorney, but appointing him as interim city attorney, there are also some concerns about, you know, the way things are going to flow. We have heard over and over again in public safety, when we try to do something from law, that we can't do it. Other cities in Michigan are doing it, we legally can't do it. I'm concerned that we may end up with the same type of decisions moving forward that I disagree with and other cities within the state disagree with, and I want to make sure that we are putting someone in this position that's going to advance the cause of the city forward. Because staying, staying how things are now, status quo is not, is not going to work anymore. Things are changing, the housing stock is getting worse, people are living in more dangerous situations, there's a lot of things that can be enacted that other cities are doing that we keep getting told we can't. So I want to make sure that we're doing this selection correctly.
Thank you, Councilman Hussein, Cost, sorry, threw me off out there, not time for celebrating, appreciate that. Do we have any additional comments, questions? Okay, Vice President Hussein.
So I was originally prepared to support, but I, I think you make some good points. I had actually had an opportunity to sit down with Mr. Venker and expressed support in, in the fact, just like you said, experience, not just with the City of Lansing, but I think some, some related experience, pertinent experience in Wisconsin, has always done a nice job. But we, we did have some conversations, candid conversations around some concerns about whether the fight would be there, the grit, the resourcefulness, particularly if we talk about bad actors, predatory actors in the City of Lansing, and the fact that you're, I, I think you're absolutely spot on, there are times where we want to kind of go full throttle and it seems like there's, there's quite a bit of pushback, and, and I don't know necessarily where that comes from. I think historically with, with Mr. Smirka, he would come to committee and say, look, I think we can do this, and then there would be some pushback internally within the office, and, and not always with, with sound defense in terms of the pushback. So, and then the other piece was, you know, I was, and I was frank, that this is quite a bit, when we talk about volume, when we talk about workload, this is elevated, right, over deputy city attorney, I mean, you really have to be available around the clock, so we had some conversations just about whether or not the capacity for that would be there. So again, I, I think the world of you, Greg, I think you do a great job, but I, but I would agree that maybe an interim phase would, would be appropriate, just to ensure that even Mr. Venker kind of knows what he's getting into and he can sustain that. I, I would say this, I think we could easily table this and, and ask the administration for a resolution of confirmation for Mr. Venker as an interim, because we had, we've had processes, I think there was an opinion that came out of the office that said that the process has been inconsistent in the past, but frankly, there was a resolution of confirmation before McIntyre, there was a resolution of confirmation, and we're talking for interim city, city attorneys, but between McIntyre and Mr. Smirka as well, and that would have been for Joe Aboud, so I think actually that it has been the process going back several years now, and I think that would be appropriate. Thanks.
Apologies, Councilman Carter.
Yes, thank you. To Councilman, Councilmember Cost's point, I, timing is something for me, I unfortunately just haven't had the pleasure of connecting with you besides one initial conversation, Mr. Venker, so just for me personally, I would like to have the opportunity to just have a thorough conversation, again, based on paper, based on the one interaction that we have had. Everything looks good on paper, again, I just want to make sure that I do my due diligence and have a thorough conversation before making a finalized appointment decision.
Thank you, Councilwoman Carter. Councilwoman Pelavonaglu.
Thank you, I'll, I'll be brief. I'd just like to say that from my recollection, Mr. Venker did reach out to all council members and offered for us to meet with him, so I would encourage you to take the time to meet with him, to any council member who has not had the opportunity yet. I have found Mr. Venker to be responsive in a very timely manner to any question that I have put forward to him, and I think that his responses to me were very well balanced. So coming into tonight's meeting, I, I was prepared, I, you know, I respect everyone's opinion on taking more time or, you know, having the opportunity to have this interim phase, but I will say that with my experience with him, he has been completely responsive, he does know the city and how it works and how it should work, and again, I think his responses to me have been balanced, I don't feel that they were ever skewed in one way or another, he simply gave me facts and information, so I guess that's what I would like to put forward, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pelavonaglu. I also would like to say that I was prepared to support Mr. Venker this evening, I respect our colleagues and, and if they need more time, so be it, I'm not going to stop that, I will support to table this. However, I've, you know, like I said, I've worked with Mr. Venker over the course of several years, and he's been very responsive, kind of a gentleman that works and thinks outside the box, and I think he would be a very good fit for our city attorney. But with that all being said, I will definitely support to table at, at this point in time.
All right, so with that, I would officially move the table.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions or concerns, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, moving down to closed session, Vice President Hussein.
Sure, pursuant to MCL 15.268 subsection C of the Open Meetings Act, City Council will recess in a closed session for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with a negotiation of memorandums of understanding between the City of Lansing and Local Number 421 of the International Association of Firefighters as requested by the city.
All right, thank you. Miss Spoke, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Cost?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pelavonaglu?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. And for those out in the public, we will be entering closed session, I know we're just after 7 o'clock, we'll get through this and we have a few, four discussion action items, and then we will probably take a five, 10-minute break before we start council, so thank you for being patient and we'll be with you shortly. Okay, we're back into Committee of the Whole, for those that just arrived, we are still in Committee of the Whole, we have four more resolutions to act on, and then we will take a short break before we start council. Okay, moving on down, we are to discussion action item, Resolution I, Vice President Hussein.
Sure, just very briefly, for all four resolutions that deal with the MOUs, these will remain in effect, in effect, sorry, for the remainder of the 2022 through 2026 collective bargaining agreements. The first is a resolution, this is ratification of the memorandum of understanding, Local 421 International Association of Firefighter medic incentive payments, and essentially what this does is gets rid of the tiered structure that was baked into the existing CBA, and it provides paramedics with ambulance pay incentive when assigned to the ambulance, it's, it's going to be a flat $350 per 24-hour shift. And so with that said, I would move the resolution.
All right, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions, concerns, comments from council members? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? All right, motion passes. Moving on down.
Sure, the next resolution, this is a ratification of the MOU, Local 421 International Association of Firefighters, compensatory time, and essentially what this does is allows for compensatory instead of overtime pay, and that's up to 108 hours, with anything over 108 hours being compensated with overtime pay. So with that being said, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any questions, concerns, comments from council? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? All right, motion passes.
The next resolution deals with ratification of the MOU, Local 421 International Association of Firefighters provisions for battalion chief and captain roles. I'm, I'm going to simplify this, basically this removes the examined assessment centers as part of the promotion requirements, and allows us to go to the list as an example for those that are credentialed candidates for, for promotion. That being said, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns from council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? All right, motion passes.
All right, and this is, the reason why I prefaced all four of these with the fact that this will remain in effect for 2022 through 2026 as our department and administration assess a number of things, is primarily due to this piece. This, you know, was discussed that we are in dire need of paramedics at this time, we must have one paramedic on each ambulance, and so this MOU essentially requires that each new or future hire will have to go through paramedic school. There will be priority hiring for paramedics with firefighter one and two, to paramedics without the firefighter one and two, T EMT with firefighter one and two, and then will help hopefully then become paramedics, the cost for paramedic school will be covered the first time by the City of Lansing, and then there's a requirement that for new hires, that there is a license extended within 12 months of paramedic school completion, or they could potentially face termination, although baked into the MOU is this understanding the timeline can be increased for good cause. So with that being said, I would move the resolution of MOU.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any questions, comments, concerns from council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you, and with that, we are adjourned, and like I said before, we're just getting over with Committee of the Whole, so we will take a short recess and we'll be back for council. Thank you.